Please rise for the Pledge of Believers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Um, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lennon.
President.
Martin.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We have our quorum this evening. Uh, next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose, uh, we make two changes to the agenda. Uh, under Presentations, I see our, uh, County Commissioner, uh, Helene Zach is here. Uh, if we could add her as, uh, Item D, and if we could remove regular, uh, Agenda Items Seven C and Seven D, uh, dealing with the, uh, vacation of, uh, Chesterfield and, uh, Fern Street and the CN lease agreement. Support.
Moved by Polika and supported by Lennon. And, uh, Dan, Chris, I assume that the removal of the C and D-
C and D is exactly what I was going to address, Your Honor.
Okay. Is there anything you want to say about that? Do we have a time, timeframe?
There is not a date certain yet, Your Honor. Uh, it's still being worked on.
All right.
Can I ask a question about that?
Of course.
Has the owner of, um, eleven eleven, his name has been notified? His council was notified that it's not going to be addressed by council.
Any other, uh, comments or questions on the agenda? All right, it was moved by Polika, supported by Lennon. Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is, as modified, is adopted. Moving on now to Presentations. Our first presentation is the Ferndale Public Schools, and I see, uh, School Trustee Amy Butters here, holding a sign that looks familiar. Good evening.
My name's Amy Butters. I'm on the school board here in Ferndale, and yes, this is a sign that looks familiar to you, Mayor, because I know you have one in your yard.
I do.
And so I'm gonna, uh, leave a few back in the back for anyone who still needs one. These are our updated Ferndale Schools Eagle Pride signs. Um, you might remember last year we had Eagle Pride signs, and they were all over town, and it was great to see them popping up all over town. These are new ones, especially for this year. These have the fancy dancy hashtag FPS Eagle Pride. So they're a little bit more up to date, a little bit more, you know, uh, uh, geared toward the social media. So if you're on Twitter, if you're on Facebook, if you do a search for hashtag FPS Eagle Pride, you can see people that have posted all the pictures and all the things they're proud of at Eagle, at our, uh, Ferndale School District. And so if you ever would like to post something that you think is cool about our district, use this hashtag, and it's a great way to spread the word about our district. Uh, we're of course, um, putting these out in, kind of in preparation for homecoming. And so I wanted to make sure and mention that to you tonight. Homecoming is October ninth, which is a week from this Friday, so it's coming right up. We're gonna have a parade again, and the tailgate, and the football, football game that Friday night, and so we're looking forward to everybody coming out for that. It'll be a great time. October ninth. Um, I want to give a couple of thank yous out to a few people. First of all, thanks to everyone who came to our game, last home game, which was our, uh, feel-good game. We called it our feel-good game, and we had special T-shirts, and we had, it was on September eleventh. And so the fire department came out with the fire trucks and a great big American flag. Mayor, you were there, and you had a wager with the Berkeley mayor, who was the, that was who the, the game was against, the Berkeley football team.
I lost my wager, but it was a great game anyway.
I know. It was still a really great game. The, the Eagles had a really great, uh, game last week. We lost again, but we, it was very close. It was a very good game. So it's so fun to come out and cheer on our football team and to watch our marching band and to just to be out, you know, there's not a whole lot that has changed about football games over the years, high school football games. It's just really fun if you, if you, if you are missing that from your youth. So, um, thank you, everyone, and thank you also to Detective Brendan Moore, who came and sang for us that, that night also. He sang the National Anthem, so that was great. Also, over the weekend DIY, I'm so glad I get to be the first person to say thanks to, um, to DIY, to the, for the DIY this weekend. Krista Johnston, of course, is one of the organizers, and she always remembers to include Ferndale Schools in that great event. Uh, we had a PTA stand booth there where we were selling spiritware and baked goods, and we had face painting. And, um, it's just a really nice way to, again, be out there and spread the word about Ferndale Schools at that event, which is, you know, brings a lot of people down, to downtown Ferndale. So it's, it's, um, really nice to be included, and we appreciate that. Okay, so lastly, the last thing that I wanted to come and make sure and talk to you about is our millage, which is coming up on this, uh, November's ballot. So this election is coming right up, right? It's just about a month away. And on the ballot is a millage for our Ferndale School District. And I wanted to just kind of make sure that people are aware that it's on the ballot and understand, you know, what is it? Um, on our FerndaleSchools.org website, there is a link to a special site. Um, I could tell you the exact, I think it's FerndaleVoting.com. But if you go to the schools website, it'll take you there. And it has a lot, a lot of information about this millage. So I thought I'd just pass along just a few basic questions and answers for, for those of you who might be curious about this millage that's going to be on the ballot. Um, it's, uh, it's a millage that is continuing. This is not a new millage. It is a millage that will be a renewal. There's rules, right, about elections, and so it doesn't say on the ballot that it's a renewal, but it is indeed a renewal. So this will be a continuation of a tax that, that is already, has already been in place for a long time. So it will be, it will not be an increase. It'll just be a renewal. This applies to non-homestead property owners. People will say, oh, it's a non-homestead millage. And what, what does that mean? That means it's industrial and commercial property and rental properties. So, um, they would continue to be, to pay this millage at the same rate that they're currently paying. It allows the district to raise the amount we levy, but only in the event of a headly rollback, rollback. So thus, it brings in, it brings the rate back to the current eighteen mils. That gets kind of complicated. But that's, that's basically, it's a, the important thing to remember is it's a non-homestead millage, so it's not a millage that's charged to homeowners. So if you're a homeowner in Ferndale, it does not show up on your, on your tax bill. So, um, it will not impact your property taxes. So the passage of the, of the millage would result, for business owners, it would result in a continuation of your current millage tax rate. Like I said, it's just the same rate as it's been. Um, I want to just tell you a little bit about how much money this is. This brings in four million dollars a year to the district. And I have a little pie chart here. I know it's tiny, but it's a big chunk of our budget, of the Ferndale Schools' budget, four million dollars. And, um, so it's, this is money that we really, really, truly need, you know, to run our schools. So it's gonna be really important when you get to the voting booth in November, or if you're voting absentee, um, to vote yes on this renewal.
May I apologize? Could you pull the mic down closer to your mouth? Thank you.
I don't have to repeat everything I just said.
No.
No, you don't. Seriously.
I know. It's not the most exciting stuff, but it is really, you know, it is really important, and I know Councilman, Councilwoman Piana and I talked about this a little bit the other day, that it's really important that we educate the voters and make sure they know what they're, what they're voting on. Um, so November third is Election Day. I know everybody here already knows that, but just make sure to, um, you know, what, what would help this school district is a yes vote. Um, like I said, there's more information on the website if you wanted to get kind of into the nitty-gritty of it, if you wanted to know more about it. Again, non-homestead, it's not a tax that the, the homeowners pay. It's just a tax that the businesses pay. So, um, that's all I've got right now. Is there any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna leave some of these signs-
Excellent.
Back here. Please take them and, or I know people are wondering, can you put up your old sign if you have one last year? Go ahead and use that one too, but these have the fancy hashtags on them, so you could even put both out if you really, if you really wanted to.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
All right. Our next presentation would be the Ferndale Area District Library, and yes, there he is.
Adam Steinbach.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, just a couple of announcements of upcoming events. There's a poetry reading this Thursday, October first, at seven PM. Come join us for an evening of live poetry hosted by John Lamb and featuring poets Robert Fanning, Denise Hinrichsen, Janet Lawless. And it's sponsored by the Springfield Arts with support by Susan Shaner. Um, we're also doing Start Here Saturdays again. For those of you who don't know, it's local live music at the library, uh, Saturday nights, seven PM. Um, and this, this coming Saturday will be Shiver and at Willoughby. We're also hosting Game Day again, October tenth. That's also a Saturday from one to six. You can learn to play a new game, uh, with old friends or play an old game with new friends. And, uh, Paws and Tails Returns. This was an event where, um, therapy dogs were brought in to help new readers, um, who can practice reading to the therapy dog. Uh, the therapy dogs won't judge, criticize, or correct pronunciation, uh, or at least hopefully not. And, um, it's just a, it's a calm therapeutic environment to help them get over any shyness they might have. Um, if you're interested, there, there will be six fifteen-minute time slots available, and parents should call two four eight five four six two five zero four, extension four, to register. Uh, and last, but not least, thank you for everyone to, who came out and, uh, helped us out at the Friends of Ferndale Library Beer Tent and Wine Garden, and to all the volunteers who helped run the, the Beer Tent and Wine Garden. Uh, the Ferndale Friends of the Library raised two thousand three dollars and fifty cents.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the report. Appreciate it. Uh, our next presentation is, uh, the Downtown Development Authority. I think we have a quorum of the board here, which is wonderful to see. Thanks all for being here. And the chairman, Dean Bach, is gonna report on the DDA activities.
Am I allowed to even talk with a quorum in the room?
Yes.
All right, uh, good evening. I love to talk, right? Um, thanks, you guys. Uh, I'm, uh, up here. Um, we, I got a nice little list to talk about. First, uh, the, the, the Ferndale, the FDY and the Funky Ferndale, um, Art Fair, I gotta say, was awesome.
It was.
Uh, Mark Loeb from Funky Ferndale and the Johnston's and, and their partners, the Johnston family and their partners. What a great time. It was, uh, Mother Nature cooperated. There was a lot of people. It had great press coverage. Uh, Cindy, uh, Wilcock did great on TV. She, like she said, she got more than her fifteen minutes of, uh, fame this weekend, and she was awesome to, to watch on TV. It was good to get up in the morning and see all the activity going on in Ferndale, so good job to those folks. Uh, the Get Real, um, promotion that we have on Vester with the movies has ended for the summer. It was well received. Another great showing there. We had, uh, Kayla Kopke was our, our, um, coordinator and, and committee chair. I guess she chaired the thing, and, and it was, uh, a lot of fun. A lot of people showed up to watch some great movies and some good shows. Ferndale Collision was the sponsor for the event. Those are great guys. I highly recommend that if you guys get a ding in your car and, and the parking lot here, just head on over there and, and Dennis will take care of you. It was a great, great event for the summer, and we hope to do it again next year. October fifteenth, Fight O' Does Ferndale is back. Bring your dog. Come on down to downtown Ferndale. Get some treats. See some really cool people. I wish I had a dog. Hi, Gabby. And, um, and you guys should all come out and bring your puppies to Ferndale. Even if you don't live here, it's okay. You know, Birmingham, bring your poodles. Come on down. Mr. Polika, you can bring your poodle too.
I don't have a poodle. I'll lend you Pino.
We are announcing that the Ferndale DDA has approved a new development facade grant for, uh, boutique on one five five West Nine Mile, the former NACA space. So look for improvements to their facade and a new, um, vendor in there as well for the city. More people coming, and, and do know that, uh, the Ferndale DDA does have a facade improvement, uh, program for those who want it. You can apply through it, uh, for it through the, uh, DDA office.
And the construction started today, I noticed. They've already begun, which is great.
Rolling?
Yep.
Awesome. Um, we do have a new Art Town brochure at the DDA office. Make sure to pick it up. Check out what we have going on for great public art. And Small Business Saturdays are coming. Make sure you keep your eyes posted to our website for Small Business Saturdays in downtown Ferndale. We, we have a lot of small businesses. We want to promote them. We want people to come here and shop and eat and play and work. And so keep your eyes on the website and our Facebook page for Small Business Saturdays. Uh, last but certainly not least, uh, pending the approval of City Council, we, um, are announcing a new DDA Executive Director uh, through an extensive search and the help of great volunteers of the, the business and residential community in Ferndale. April Lynch and her folks and you guys, everybody put in, um, a big effort and came up with, uh, Mr. Barry Hicks, who's here tonight. Uh, Mr. Hicks has a extensive background in downtown work and development through cities like Jackson and Sterling Heights. And we're looking forward to working with him and, and moving forward, and Ferndale's definitely at a fork in the road, and we are looking forward to lots of fun things. Cindy Wilcock, who has been a champion for the last several months, needs to, um, need, we have a debt of gratitude to her right now. She has been awesome. We're looking forward to working with her further down the road, and, uh, like, not, not enough can be said about Cindy at this point. Um, we're just looking forward to all working together and having a great time at the DDA and, and keeping things live and lots of action in downtown Ferndale. All that being said, I think I'm finished. I'll wrap it up, and, you know, thanks for listening to me and, uh, my bad jokes. And, um, thanks to the DDA Board for showing up tonight. Uh, we do have a full, a full board here tonight, and for Cindy and April and all your, all your efforts, it's really, 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 really appreciated. Now let's rock and roll. Thanks.
And I'll only add one, which is, thank you, Dean. I know you run several businesses, and yet you took on the, the presidency of the Board or the chairmanship of the Board, and you're rocking and rolling too, and we appreciate the energy and the work that you're putting in too.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, through the chair as your alternate to the DDA Board, can you give a round of applause to Cindy? She's really kept the people close last-
Yes. Great idea. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, all right, and now our final presentation. Dee is our County Commissioner, Helene Zach.
Good evening, everybody. So I voted on the Oakland County budget last week, and it is balanced for three years. And you've heard me talking about road issues multiple times. Um, we, in this budget, we're rolling back the millage rate to point zero five again. And I would have chosen to invest in roads rather than return five dollars in people's pockets. I would have rather taken that three point five million dollars in the rollback and put it toward roads. So in any case, what we were able to do collectively was to get two million dollars from Oakland County to put into road issues. And more importantly, we actually approved two million about four or five months ago that was used to purchase equipment for the Road Commission, and then that would free up some maintenance dollars. But this new money, besides the extra money, we're going to open up how we distribute the money throughout the county and look at the tri-party funding, which has always been a formula. Tri-party funding is city puts in money, county puts in money, and the Road Commission puts in money. And it has very specific guidelines. It has to be for construction. It has to be for county roads. And the formulas frankly discriminates against the South End where we don't have many county roads and we're a city. So we have a commitment to open up the formula. What I'd like to see happen is that we can apply money to maintenance. I would like to see it distributed based on population, and that it be, you know, that we could use in Ferndale the money for local roads as well. So to be continued, you know, we are gonna be discussing it, but this has been, this formula's been around since the eighties. So I'm really excited that we have some will to open it up and look at it. And I will keep you posted how that evolves.
Excellent.
Um, Saturday, October twenty-fourth, is Oakland County Day at the Detroit Institute of Arts. And part of that is that there is free transportation for Oakland County residents. Part of our discussion and negotiation on the millage was we wanted to see more benefits of the DIA coming into the communities and really touching us, and transportation was one of the things that they're doing. So if you're interested in trans, free transportation, you can go online, visit tickets.dia.org or call three one three eight three three four zero zero five. There's also, um, an interesting job opportunity coming up in the county. It hasn't been posted. There is a shortage of tax real estate evaluators across the state. And, um, Oakland County will do assessments in many communities, and what we are voting to approve is, um, changing the criteria for that particular position. You used to have to have a bachelor's degree to get to apply, and we're removing that requirement, and the job will be posted. So you need to be a customer-friendly person, have computer skills, be able to measure, you know, if you've done real estate, and to apply for a starting position in Oakland County will help people become certified. And it, you know, it's a process. We need Level Four appraisers, but I think it's a tremendous opportunity. The starting salary is around twenty-nine thousand, and it goes up to maybe eighty, up to a hundred thousand at some point when you're a Level Four assessment, tax evaluation assessment person. So I think it's a great opportunity for right, for people. And I have been talking about it. As of last week, it hadn't been posted yet, but you can watch, um, www.oakgov.com for the posting. It should be coming up pretty soon. And then finally, um, talking about regional transportation. There have been two educational sessions. One was at Ford Field. There was one at the Zoo, and there's going to be another larger forum on Sunday, November eighth, two thirty PM. Um, Michael Ford is going to come and present, um, some of the plans, the drafts. Still more feedback. It's at Charzettic Synagogue, which is on Northwestern, um, between Lhasir and Telegraph. And we hope that a thousand people will come out and learn more about regional transportation before we just, you know, the plan goes forward. You have an opportunity to comment, so I invite people to come out to this event and learn it more.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Helene? Thank you. Thanks for being here. Good to see ya. All right.
Yeah, we're on.
We're on, big time. Uh, the next item of business would be Call to Audience. Call to Audience is, uh, your opportunity to come address council on any item that's not on the agenda, because we'll give you a chance to talk to that when we get there. Uh, but just come on up and give us your name, your address, and three minutes, uh, to say whatever you would like to say to council this evening. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council this evening.
Don't laugh again. Let's go.
All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the, the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda, excuse me, is items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless council removes something from the Consent Agenda. So let me read that for you now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September fourteen, twenty fifteen. Item B is the approval to authorize the city manager to fill the finance director position due to the retirement of the finance director and in twenty fifteen contingent upon approval from the Civil Service Board. Item C is the approval to authorize the city manager to fill the full-time custodial maintenance position along with two part-time custodial staff positions to perform custodial work involving the care, maintenance, and cleaning of assigned city buildings and related facilities, and to do related work upon approval from the Civil Service. Item D is the approval of the listed modifications to non-union administrative employee benefits effective immediately, as submitted by our Director of HR. Item E is the approval to authorize a paid sick leave extension of sixty working days for this, for a city employee, as also directed- Our Director of, ooh, now we have no mic. As directed, as submitted by our Director of Human Resources, item E is the approval to authorize a paid sick leave, that's what I just said. Item F is the approval of the Performance Parts Express Estimate for three thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-five cents to be taken from the motor pool account, as submitted by the fire chief. Item G is the approval of the Blue Card Instructor and Student Support and CE Renewal for two thousand six hundred and eight dollars to be paid from the Fire Department's Education Account, also submitted by the fire chief. Item H is the approval to adopt Ordinance one one six seven, which would adopt by reference the two, the twenty-twelve edition of the Michigan Edition of the International Building Code, and to revise Article One, Section six through one of the Ferndale Code, and also to adopt Ordinance one one six eight, which would adopt by reference the twenty-twelve edition of the Michigan Edition of the International Residential Code, and to revise Article One, Section six through three of the Ferndale Code, and also to adopt Ordinance one one six nine, which would adopt by reference the twenty-twelve edition of the Michigan Edition of the Rehabilitation Code for existing buildings, and revise Article One, Section six through four of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances. And if that wasn't long enough, item I is the approval to adopt Ordinance eleven seventy, adopting the twenty-fourteen Michigan Electrical Code, and to update Charter, Chapter Six, Article Three, Section six through thirty-one of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances, and also to adopt, uh, eleven seventy-one, which would, which would adopt by reference the twenty-twelve edition of the Michigan Edition of the International Mechanical Code, and revise Article Five, Section six through eighty-three of the Ferndale Code, and also to adopt eleven seventy-two, which would adopt by reference the twenty-twelve edition of the Michigan Edition of the International Plumbing Code, and to revise Article Four, Section six through sixty-nine of the Ferndale Code. Both of those submitted by our Community and Economic Development Director. And finally, item J is the approval of the bills and payroll, as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to the review of the Council's Finance Committee. What is the council's pleasure on the Consent Agenda this evening?
I've moved that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented. Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Polika. Now, is there any discussion on the Consent Agenda?
I'd like you to read all those codes again.
I know.
I would, um-
As tempting as that is.
I would like to, uh, just talk on one item, uh, six E, Recommendation of Sick Leave Extension. Um, particularly the, the language, and, and I understand that this contract was done quite a while ago, and it talks about sixty working days of, uh, sixty sick days. Um, I, I believe, based on reading the, uh, the information, that really what it's getting to is, um, short-term disability. Um, so I would request that in the future, when we're working with contracts, and I think this is something more aligned with what, what Jenny works with, is that if we, um, have the language reflect that kind of thing, you know, it's not typical to find sixty sick days. It's more typical to find something talking about short-term disability and long-term disability. So that's my only request.
Do you have any comment to that, or, I mean, it wasn't a question per se, so I saw you get up, so I'll give it up. Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions on the Consent Agenda? If not, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon. Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The Consent Agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is the consideration to confirm the DDA Director, and April, do you want to introduce that item, or?
I think Chairman Bach had already mentioned that we've, uh, the DDA has hired as of last Tuesday- Tuesday, Mr. Barry Hicks. He is here today, if you'd like to have him come up and say a couple words and kind of introduce himself, so if you want to come forward.
Technically, they haven't hired him yet.
Well, technically, you are correct. We do have to confirm it.
Maybe I should wait till you hire me first.
Yeah, right? We can still vote no. That's right.
I told them to have, you know, twenty slides of PowerPoint ready to go, so...
We do love that.
But she only told me twenty minutes.
No, but you, why don't you just very briefly, you know, introduce yourself and tell us a little about you?
Sure, thank you. Uh, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me here tonight. And uh, you know, I don't have anything prepared, so I'll just keep this real brief. Um, I just want to say uh, thanks to you and also to the DDA Board, uh, who several members are here this evening for this opportunity. Also, uh, you know, thank you to April for being so efficient at helping us through this process of very uh, expedited and everything, really great. Um, so I'm looking forward to coming on board and uh, working with all of you.
Mr. Hicks' first day is October 19th, so we're very excited to have him on board should council approve his contract today, so. I don't know if you guys have any questions for Mr. Hicks or any...
Yeah, anybody have any questions of Barry?
They will come.
Eventually, right? Could you like speaking briefly through the chair, I mean, speaking briefly about your background would be helpful.
Uh, yeah, so I came uh, most recently from Sterling Heights where I was in charge of the Corridor Improvement Authority, a business incubator, and also their city planner. Um, and prior to that, I was in the city of Jackson, a pretty similar function. So a lot of my background has to do with uh, economic development and planning, zoning, and believe it or not, I actually understood most of those codes you just rattled off a second ago.
Wow. Me too, I mean, yes.
Sorry, I didn't even laugh. Have a good day.
But uh, no, that's, that's kind of a little bit about my background. My formal education's also in uh, urban and regional planning.
Well, assuming a positive vote, welcome aboard. And you don't live very far, you live right in the next town north of us, right?
Uh, currently, I live in Birmingham.
Oh, why did I think it was Royal Oak?
There it goes.
You, you don't have a poodle, though?
Uh, no poodles.
All right. I'm picking on poodles tonight. All right, thank you. A motion would be in order.
Your Honor, I'd like to move to approve, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
Fighting for it.
I'd like to approve the contract uh, in compensation for the newly appointed executive director Barry Hicks pursuant to the Downtown Development Authority Act 1997 of 1975. Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Polika. Uh, any discussion, comments, questions?
Just, I just wanted to thank the DDA Board um, for inviting me to sit on the Executive Search Committee. Um, I was really impressed with the process and the very thoughtful deliberation that the DDA Search Committee um, gave to our, our candidates. And I'm very hopeful and uh, welcome Barry with open arms to the city of Ferndale. Welcome to our downtown.
Your Honor, I'd like to second that. Not only the search committee, which had a lot of talent in uh, uh, finding our new executive director, but I would like to thank Councilwoman Piana, who's not on the DDA Board, and I think that was to her favor to go off and be part of the search committee. So I really appreciate your service in that activity, so.
Yeah, exactly. And Mr. Hicks, were you downtown uh, this weekend by chance?
I went to DIY, yeah.
Okay, very good.
I was caught on camera by drone.
Don't let Mr. Polika know about that, okay? We've been through Drone Gate already.
New comments.
And then um, I need to echo what Barry said about April. Um, she just had a great, efficient um, process on behalf of um, the DDA and the city. And if there's anybody who can herd cats, it's April.
Well, to continue to love that, um, I had to tell you, it was actually, the experience was really a lot of fun. I think that I was really impressed with the DDA Board and the thoughtful process that they, that they worked through. And I really enjoyed building relationships with the Board. I thought it was just really well done and really appreciate the, the time and energy that they put in. And some of them had to miss a couple of days of work to make that happen as well. So really appreciate that and really enjoy the relationships that I built because of that, so, thank you.
Excellent. Um, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Welcome to Ferndale, Barry. Uh, next item of business would be the consideration of 1225 Woodward Heights rezoning from R2 to MXD2. And our Director of Community and Economic Development is gonna introduce that item.
Hey, I'm, good evening, your honor, uh, councilmembers. Um, I'm glad to be here tonight. Um, I'm here forwarding a recommendation from the city's planning commission regarding a rezoning of an existing location, 1225 Woodward Heights. Um, the property's located on the north side of Woodward Heights, just west of Hilton. Uh, most recently, it is, uh, and continues to be the Tokyo Sushi, uh, formerly Pete's Place, um, was recently acquired um, by a restaurant owner in the city of Ferndale, who has brought forward plans um, for some additional investment and redevelopment of the site. Through that process, um, it was identified that the site is actually zoned residential. Um, the restaurant use historically has been there as an existing non-conforming use at, since at least 2010, um, and quite possibly prior to. Um, the existing non-conforming status allows the, the restaurant use to stay in perpetuity in place as long as they don't make any expansions. Um, the new owner does want to make some significant investment and, and small expansion of the facility, uh, necessitating the need for the rezoning. Approached the planning commission, a public hearing was held. Uh, the planning commission recommended unanimously um, to rezone the property um, to MXD2, which would allow the uh, expansion of the restaurant and the new restaurant used to go in and also is in conformance with the city's master manager's plan that discusses mixed use in urban residential. So the, the planning commission did recommend rezoning of that after conducting the public hearing. Um, staff also recommended a, approval of it. And I will uh, ask Joe to come on up. I think everybody knows.
Let me just say this, though, before you ask Joe to come up and talk a little bit about the new restaurant, just very briefly point out um, the distinctions in this project that would require the rezoning.
Specifically, the expansion. Um, anytime you have an existing non-conforming use, you're not allowed to expand the building. Um, their plans do incorporate a, a small expansion out the back to allow more efficient and, and the, the type of operation they want. So without the rezoning, specifically, the expansion can't take place.
Gotcha.
Mr. Delacorte, um, does the vacant lot just west of the parking lot, is that part of 1225, or is that separately owned?
Separately owned. Um, we've looked into it and I know that the new owner has as well. We're hopeful that we included it someday. It's not currently.
Not currently?
Current, correct.
Thank you.
So Joe, you want to come up and just tell us a little bit about your concept?
I wish that vacant lot was part of the property. Would make a lot of things a lot easier, but uh, go figure. A restaurant on a residential property sounds like home cooking is in order. But uh, my wife Jennifer and I have operated Anita's Kitchen since 2008 and she was born and raised here, so it is uh, home to her, always has been. And for me, being an out-of-stater from New York, uh, Ferndale has always felt like home as well. We don't necessarily live in the immediate area, but we do own a number of properties within Ferndale and believe strongly in the community, the people, um, all of the services that are provided. We saw this building as an opportunity to uh, expand our footprint with Dean and the audience. I think we know uh, having one just isn't fun enough. You gotta just keep going and uh, drive yourself crazy. But uh, we have some nice ideas. We don't have a formal plan just yet, but uh, within the plans that were included in the application, the addition would be some outdoor seating. We've really uh, benefited from having that patio space on Woodward. Uh, we look forward to also incorporating that into not only this project, but any other project that we would have down the road. Um, in addition to that, we would be looking to add some commercial space, which would increase the footprint just for uh, larger kitchen use and, and things along that line. Um, scope of it is somewhere between fifty and sixty-five seats maximally. It won't be uh, anything that operates late into the evening. We uh, currently close at nine from Sunday through Thursday. We close at ten on Fridays and Saturdays and uh, with a thirteen and eleven-year-old at home, it's always in our interest to try and be home long before uh, the late hour. But uh, we just look forward to the opportunity to continue to be part of this community and feel that this little corner of Ferndale uh, holds a lot of opportunity and we would like to be part of that growth uh, moving in that direction as well.
Right. Cool. Uh, to the chair, can I make comments or whatever?
Sure. I'm just thrilled. I think that you, you and Jenny, um, and this is very heartfelt, have bailed me out more than once on community events with Taste of Ferndale and other things that have gone on. And you are really community partners committed to Ferndale. And so the fact that you're willing to reinvest here, much as Dean has and others in the community, um, I'm just, I'm thrilled with. So thank you. Um, it means a lot. I think that your, your heart is here and your spirit is here and I'm, I'm really looking forward to your further success. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. We're excited as well.
The concept then of a bakery cafe, that's just kind of whatever, that...
It's not far off.
Okay.
It uh, it's in the realm. It uh, those images are not, wouldn't be names that we would be using. Uh, the architects took uh, writer embellishments there and created some things, but uh, we are working with some people who are uh, very talented and um, it would be a hope to go in that direction.
Gotcha.
To the chair?
Yes, please.
Um, I think the, the neighborhood is just really looking forward to having some more dining options over there at the, the northwest corner or the northeast corner. And so I think this is a, a great um, addition to, to that corner.
We do as well. It, when you think of Birmingham and Eaton, Hilton to me holds that same potential.
Exactly.
That has taken off through the last five, six years. And uh, and it's just, it, it's a cool neighborhood. And uh, we have lunches that go throughout all of that microeconomic offices and whatnot, so uh, it, it seems like a great area.
Craig, I'm sorry, did you, were you gonna?
Yeah, I did, I, I very much echo uh, Councilman Martin's sentiments. Uh, we're both on the Ferndale Community Foundation and like he says, you have bailed this out more than once. Um, and I'm very excited that uh, something's gonna be uh, used of the former Pete's Place. Uh, Peter Mel is a very good friend of mine and uh, that whole neighborhood was very sad when, when Pete's Place co, closed. So it's, it's great that you're um, you're gonna be uh, creating something that's gonna be a draw for that neighborhood. Um, I will express one concern, um, is that you're, it looks like you're gonna be expanding or you're wanting to expand almost fifty percent, um, increase in size and you're eliminating five spaces. I know that whole area is um, questionable with parking. The church across the street tends to use this parking lot on Sundays uh, when they have services. And that was an issue from time to time with Pete's Place. So um, I just concerned that there may be parking issues on the streets. Um, just wanted to get that out there for anybody, once uh, once calls start coming through, so. But uh, I'm glad to see something um, so incredibly great coming into that building.
Thank you. We, we're um, sensitive to that. And certainly, I have been in contact with a number of the other businesses that are in that immediate area as well as uh, the vacant lot owners and looking to uh, try and come up with some solutions that eliminate any log jams that might be taking place.
Great.
Hopefully, it's going to be a very pedestrian...
I would hope so, too, yeah, yeah.
But understanding parking uh, is an issue and always has been. Um, the city's been very creative in the ways in which we've handled it, so we're looking forward to solving those issues ahead.
Well, and I appreciate what you said about the Hilton corridor. We too think that that has a lot of potential. We, the city continues to invest in that. And part of our uh, hope is that our public investment will uh, lure private investment like you're gonna make. And so this is a significant investment in that area and if it's anything uh, like your current business, uh, I have no doubt it'll be very successful, which yours has been from the very beginning. You might not live here, but I think you spend probably more time here in Ferndale than you do at home, so...
There is no question.
You're an honorary resident, so uh, looking forward to it.
And then the best heroes in Metro Detroit, no offense.
I know, I thought about asking for free uh, chicken shawarma.
Right, right.
Did you bring any?
They're, they're behind door number one. I couldn't bring the Almaza in.
All right, so a motion would be in order at this point.
I'll move that the city council approve the rezoning request from R2 Single Two Family Residential to MXD2 Mixed Use for 1225 Woodward Heights as well. Number 2527284020, uh, with the findings listed in the proposal in the packet. Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Polika. All right, additional questions or comments? Anyone in the audience as well? Anyone that has anything to say on this item? All right, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, Joe, good luck.
Have a nice week.
All right, uh, now item E is a consideration of a snow emergency ordinance update. And I believe Joe is gonna introduce that item.
Yes, Mayor Culter. Um, we have been working, uh, the city manager's office with the Public Works Director and the Chief of Police and the City Attorney over the past year to just provide some updated, updates on the language for our snow emergency ordinance. Over the past two years, we've had some pretty crazy winters that have brought some pretty powerful storms, um, that have uh, given us cause to take some time during the spring and summer season to evaluate the ordinance and find some room for recommendations to improve um, the enforcement. And uh, I highlighted a couple of those in the cover letter, um, and I will uh, provide the premise that the, the number one objective of the snow emergency ordinance is public safety and it is removing as many vehicles as we safely can from the street temporarily so the Public Works Department can clear the roads from curb to curb. Some of the changes that we are recommending that can facilitate that, um, I can just provide a quick high level over for the public. Um, one would be uh, providing some terms and definitions to the, to the uh, ordinance that didn't exist, such as the definition of driveway, um, and alley. That helps us determine uh, the applicability of snow emergency permit exemptions. Again, the objective being to um, move as many vehicles off the street as possible um, for the short term while we clear the roads. Um, one would be uh, establishing an annual renewal process. Right now, the emergency ordinance um, has had the permits uh, just in place in perpetuity. So once people were assigned those years ago, that data's never changed, it's never been updated. So properties could have changed, property ownership could have changed. This just helps us uh, manage the recording of those permits uh, moving forward. And those permits are uh, gonna be distributed and managed by the Ferndale Police Department. Um, uh, we want some more flexibility, so we have language in there that empowers the city manager's office to uh, approve use of municipal parking lots or any municipally-owned parking lot. That could include a parks, parking lot to accommodate some temporary parking for people who need to move other vehicles, um, if they have some overflow. Uh, the previous ordinance language just specifically allowed us to designate West Breckenridge and East Breckenridge Lot. This opens up every municipal uh, surface lot uh, to our availability. Um, I will add to that, that we are currently working with the Director of Public Works to identify um, a series of public lots that we would declare uh, during a snow emergency that would fit in with his operations plan as well. So um, we're not just moving your cars in there and then not plowing and just letting that snow accumulate. We are gonna uh, absorb this into the operations plan. Um, we added some flexibility for the Public Works to Director to declare the snow emergency, so this helps us be a little bit more proactive. Um, if he knows something is coming in advance and it's already hit the west side of the state, we don't have to wait for it to actually hit. We can, he can be a little bit more proactive about it. Um, and we just updated the communication channels. So we included some updates on general language, you know, we can now declare this via the website and via social media if it's owned by the city. Um, and that just, those are the general, uh, that's uh, the overview of the changes that were written.
Joe, did you and, I'm sorry, did you and staff, through the chair?
Yeah.
Sorry. You and staff put this together or with Dan?
Yes.
Because I, I remember the ordinance committee, I registered early and I am just very impressed of the updates. Uh, you guys did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Give just more clarification on um, just basically every aspect of it.
And I, I did fail to mention, we, we did take this to the ordinance review uh, committee through, I think it was late spring. So we, we began to really develop the language in the spring and now, before we get to October, we thought we'd bring it up for approval.
If I may through the chair, just a couple of comments. Um, one, this is great work, thank you very much. Um, the feedback I would have is one, education, education, education. Residents don't understand how this works. We still have residents that understand the snow emergency, have gotten the sticker and then go feed the meters, as it were, in the overflow lots at a snow emergency that somehow they have to pay because they can't park on their street and they have no driveway. So the more we can do to get resident awareness engaged there, to understand what that access So the more we can do to get resident awareness engaged there, to understand what that access is, we've got to do that, because I hear this all the time. Secondly, I have great faith in the Police Department to administer this, but from a perspective of customer service, to make them go to multiple places for a snow emergency renewal sticker is arduous. So if we can have them come to City Hall as opposed to the Police Department to administer them, and I'm concerned about the renewal process, I get that people from years and years and years ago have these stickers that don't necessarily need them anymore because they don't live here, but I can't believe they're coming to Ferndale in a snowstorm to say, "I got a sticker, I'm going to the parking lot." I don't know that the administration of that is going to pay for the bang for the buck, and I'm concerned about inconveniencing existing families that live here that have snow emergency stickers, and where they go to get a renewal where they thought they've been good as they've been good for years. So again, education, education, education. Just, again, not that you've done anything wrong, this is fantastic work. These are my concerns from, that are going to hit the residents.
Sure, we have already held some opening discussions with our Director of Communications, Kara Sokol, about the importance of communicating all of these changes, and then just the restructured policy in its entirety.
I would even, and you know how much I love paying for mailings, I would even, I would even do a direct mail piece on this. If you're going to require a renewal, I would do a direct mail piece on this.
Yes, yes, that was the intent.
Thank you.
What type of record-keeping is done for this right now?
I can let the chief comment on this, but I do believe that the benefit of having the Ferndale Police Department administer this is, I think, the records can be incorporated into Clemis.
It's in Clemis?
In the mass, Councilman, this was supposed to be administered at the Department of Public Works, and it kind of fell apart. So we volunteered to take over it because we can put permitting right into Clemis, so when anybody goes to look at a car, they can, not only if the sticker's not there, it will be entered into our system and the county-wide system, so all our permits will be listed on a renewal basis. So it'll be much more easier to manage, it'll be computerized, and it's already built into the system.
That's real good, that's real good, chief.
So who is eligible for a sticker, for an exemption?
Not you.
No, that's a serious question.
Through the chair, Mayor, this amendment provides that anyone without a driveway would be eligible. It provides clarification on that issue where driveways were not previously defined term, nor was alleys. And so this attempts to make clear that in order to be eligible for the exemption, you, it's for those individuals who would not have a driveway. It also is limited to two exemption permits per residence or premises. And then additionally, it continues the current carve-out for somebody who would have a handicap permit.
If I may, through the chair, though, alley's a dangerous thing, because we've got a lot of dirt paths, we call alleys in the city, that don't get plowed, that candidly, as we define it, we need to be careful of, because I wouldn't park my car in some of these things. And there's, you know, these, that complicates the issue, as it were.
Are there any provisions, through the chair, for shared driveways? We do have several of them, right?
No, that's not addressed. They would not be eligible because those people would have, techs would have a driveway.
Technically, yes.
I can answer that if you want, but our theory was, in our discussions, was that many times, people with shared driveways, we always remember that this is an emergency that will last several hours, not weeks.
Right.
We just want you off the street, so we can plow the streets, then as soon as you're curb to curb, you can, even though the emergency's still in effect, as long as your street's curb to curb, you can park back out on the street. So we tell our, we want to tell our residents, again through communication, that, hey, during a snow emergency, deal with your neighbors, park in the, in your driveway for that temporary period of time until the roadway gets cleared, and then we're back, you're back to wherever you've been parking on the road, on the street, like you had been in the past.
If I may, through the chair?
Not yet, because I'm still actually trying to get my original question answered, and we've gone in a different direction, so hang on for one minute. So this, is there any other group that's eligible for one of these permits? Handicap or?
Handicap.
Handicap.
It's continued.
And not affected by this policy?
Not affected by this amendment to this ordinance.
By this amendment.
And then it just clarifies that it's eligible for those who don't have driveway.
With respect, the handicap, as I read it, and I may be wrong, is a class that can get this permit, but they are subject to their new renewal process.
With handicapped stickers, they're exempt from the provisions of this ordinance.
Oh, that's great, thank you so much.
Okay, so I guess my question is, if you don't have a driveway, so you get the exemption, help me understand, they're not going to get a driveway in the next year, right? People aren't adding driveways. So help, just help, walk through me, walk through the rationale for the annual renewal.
There are several reasons. Some are is that we get new cars that come into new households, they'll need new stickers. We have houses that have sold, so you don't know if, and it's our way of keeping track of who has the stickers, and they're not being traded, they're not being sold, they're not being whatever. You get a new sticker every year. That way, we can keep, and what wasn't being done is there were no inspections being done. People were coming in and saying, "I don't have a driveway," and they're going to be given a sticker. So we are going to the Police Department. Part of the reason we took it on, too, is that we are going to go out to their homes, inspect them, make sure that they don't have a driveway, because quite, there are, now there's going to be fewer and fewer as we go forward, but some of the residences will, their circumstances will change. They may have, they may not have a driveway now, but they can add a driveway or a garage or pave a dirt entranceway. So we felt, realistically, we looked at the numbers in the city and how many they were. It's not going to be a huge imposition on our time, so we would rather do the inspection and go out every year to make sure everything is.
What is the number approximately?
Fewer than 200.
Is there a way, and I'm piggybacking on what Councilman Martin?
The number there are, that's not the number of people that apply. We looked at the number of houses that would qualify.
That would qualify, right. Is there a way, rather than a mass mailing, and maybe that's part of the plan as well, but is there a way to capture an email or something, and then notify people that, you know, last year's permit is going to expire and you need to get a new permit for next year? I mean, I can just see that people are going to say, "Look, I have the same car, I have the same house, why are you, you're going to make me go down there and get another one, nothing has changed?" Is there a way to at least remind them that this renewal is going to be required through an email or something?
Yeah, we'll work with Kara, tap into all of our communications resources, but certainly, you know, we have the existing permits on file, and we have all of our subscribers to our newsletters online at the website, that's over 1,200 subscribers, and we'll use all of our other communication channels that we can to communicate it. But a big, a big piece of it-
But directly to these 200 or so?
If I may, through the chair?
Absolutely, but also to a bigger communications piece. An important piece of this was to give the City Manager the flexibility to open up all city lots, and so that's an important piece for us.
That's fantastic.
We think that that's a big value add for everyone, and specifically, we're trying to identify lots in each quadrant, serve as each population sect. So I guess what I'm saying is, we feel that we've brought enough to the table with the change, that we want to proactively communicate it anyway to the residents.
If I may, again, through the chair, I'm sorry, I don't mean to monopolize this, but I think we lose sight sometimes, and it's just feedback broadly, because I'm experiencing this in my own day job, that I think that the work Kara does is wonderful and great, but these residents, by and large, are generational. They've been here a long time, and they are not online. Emails and such, and Facebook do not reach them. So the direct mail piece has got to be a function of this.
And just so you understand that, in the past, we haven't really had their data, so this is actually the first time we are, and this is also the way that we manage our document, our documents and things. They're actually going to be communicated more now than they have been in the past. These are the ones that have the permits.
Wonderful, I'm just operating on those.
Yeah, no, we're, we're on that, for sure. I mean, like I said, they're being, communicating more with them now than they ever have been in the past.
That's great. My main concern is the people who have, who have lived in the same house for years, have had the same past for years, and now we're going to tell them, "You have to come every year and get it." So to make that process as easy as possible for them, we're-
We can look at that. We've heard your concerns, and then we can take it back, especially with the use of technology we have now, I'm sure there's something that we can come up with.
Okay, and if you're eligible, too, just as a reminder, that there's no cost to the permit. If you're eligible, you're eligible, and you do-
Right, there's not a cost to this permit.
Just to clarify.
Yep, gotcha. Okay, yes, please.
Going back to the shared driveway, I know on the street that I live on, it's not necessarily neighbor to neighbor that has the issue of the shared driveway and parking during snow emergency. It's that the two rental units in the house have an agreement, so the landlord has stated to one of them, "You can't use the driveway, your rent doesn't include it." And I know there are several people on my street that won't park in their driveway during a snow emergency because they feel their landlord supersedes the law. So I think there needs to be some education on that as well, that the landlord doesn't have the right to say, "You can't park in the driveway during a snowstorm."
We'll make sure to include that in communications piece.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I have a question about enforcement. The ordinance has, 5A talks about remove or cause removal of impounding the motor vehicle, and I know residents have a lot of questions about if the Police Department's going to ticket vehicles that don't get moved off the street. What's going to happen first? Do you get a ticket, or then you get impounded, or your car gets towed, or do you just get a ticket as a warning? So what's the process between the Police Department?
The answer to your question, Councilwoman, is maybe.
Maybe.
It depends, it really does depend on the circumstance of, if the vehicle needs to be moved, and that's usually at the direction of either the DPW or the Fire Department, DPW to get the roads cleaned, Fire Department, if there's an issue with getting a fire truck down the street, that's a definite tow. If it's in violation of the snow emergency and it can stay there, they will more than likely get a ticket. That will be the first level of, once the snow emergency has been declared, they would probably get a ticket. They would not get towed unless the vehicle had to be moved for public safety reasons or for, to get the roadway cleared.
Through the chair, one of the things that happened last year, and why Dan and everyone put so much effort into it, is we had to declare a snow emergency when there was no snow falling. People misunderstood what was happening, there's no snow predicted, why are you doing this? I needed Lloyd to open up some streets with his crews, because the snow had come out from the curb, and they were parking where even a police car to get down to see if they could get down the street. We had a couple cases where we could not get an ambulance down the street to people who needed priority two or priority one transport to Beaumont or Providence, and we were blocked by the vehicles all jig-jag down the street. So a lot of times, when we need to declare this, and that's why giving the power to the City Manager and Lloyd, would open the street by asking everyone to get off if you can. If they can't, we need to plow clear to the curb and open that up, so when they park, especially on two-sided street parking, we can still get a truck or an ambulance through. And that's a huge part of it, and that's where all this is going.
And I guess part of the answer would also be, Councilwoman, is that if at all possible, we try to get a hold of the owner and have them move it. That's not, particularly when we're in a, we need to have them move because it's a public safety issue. We try, we try to soft-shoe it first, get the car out of there before we tow it, but that's not always the case. Somebody, one person might be out of town, they might be at work, but we do, we do make an attempt to get the vehicle moved voluntarily before we would tow it.
Mayor, if I could, one other item regarding the potential fine or ticket. This proposed amendment does decriminalize it. It currently would be a misdemeanor, it has been decriminalized to a civil infraction in this draft.
Oh, okay.
Like that.
And how much is the ticket still? Is there a reduction in pricing of the ticket?
No. Civil infractions are typically $100.
$100. And just to be clear, that the, automatically at four inches is removed. It's on a lot of signs, so DPW's going to make new signs or?
I would really like to see signs, do not beat a dead horse, that says, "Don't feed the meter for the snow emergency," on the lots that we've designated, or, well, now, all lots, because residents do move and then think they got to feed the meter to get their car off the street.
If I, if I can, don't we have control over whether or not the meters, I mean, can't we determine during a snow emergency just to turn the meters off, so they don't accept any money? I mean, they don't accept money at 10 o'clock at night?
Actually, they accept them on Sundays, which is, I think, inappropriate, too. Sorry, Joe.
We can, we can certainly look at that, as far as the programming.
Good point.
I'd rather not see the city plastered with signs. I had an issue with signs last meeting.
I know, I just have an issue with collecting, you know, from people, and we don't need to, so anyway.
You bring up a good point, though. All of our signs do say four inches, snow removal.
We're aware that's on the list of things that need to be addressed.
Okay.
It's also important to note that over the last couple of years, we've, we've been revamping the system one at a time to make it more efficient. As you know, for every time we try to get a car to move, we get frustrated residents who don't have enough cars moving in their neighborhoods, so we're trying to, try to clean up some of the stuff that had prohibited us from being able to do that. So we definitely will have a lot more to learn, but we'll go from there.
Yeah, I think this is a great response to what we've heard from our residents, and so direct applicability to making improvements.
Agreed, thank you.
So a motion would be in order.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1173, amending Chapter 16, Street Sidewalks and Other Public Spaces, Article 1, and General Section 16-11 of the City of Ferndale Code of Ordinances.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Polica. Any other questions, comments on this item, public or council? All right, oh, yes, sir. Whoops, wait, yeah, wait till you get up to the mic, not that, that will help, apparently.
That's August 15, 15 Spencer. On these permits for the people who don't have driveways, are they supposed to park in front of their house? Or, you know, because, I mean, some of these people are parking up and down the street and leaving messes for others who have driveways, you know?
Right.
And I've had a neighbor who I've talked to over the years about moving his one car and putting it in a place where there was a driveway available. Nobody lived in there, you know, but he prefers to park further down. He's got, he doesn't have a driveway, but he's got a, you know, sticker to park in the street because he doesn't have the driveway.
But he doesn't park in front of his own house.
A lot of times, he doesn't.
I can see what you're getting at, Dennis, and what you're saying, is he'll park farther down, so make sure he gets plowed.
Well, he gets plowed.
Yeah, and so, I don't know, Joe, there's no provisions for that, because it's a public street, we can't tell people where to park and not to park.
Yeah, it's a public street, that's something that we cannot control for. We can just control for the actual management of the permit, making sure that the property that gets it is appropriately getting it.
Yeah, and in some cases, you have one-sided parking, streets with one-sided parking, so you can't say they have to park in front of their house when they can't ever park in front of their house.
Right.
Right.
Very gray area.
Seven years of cleaning up.
Thanks, Dennis. All right, any other comments? Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Moving on now to call to council, Police Chief Collins, anything for the good of the community this evening? All right, Jenny, anything from HR this evening? All right, Jill, anything from the Recreation Department?
Jill would be here if she didn't have something.
Always something going on in Recreation.
She lives too far away.
She's always here.
She's always-
I can't remember Jill not being here.
Really?
Yeah.
She's always got something going on, too.
That's true.
All right, just a couple of quick announcements.
Our annual Fall Festival is coming up on October 10th at Martin Road Park from 11:00 to 4:00. We will have hay rides, pony rides, carnival games, face painting, and trick-or-treating, so I would encourage everyone to come out and join us. Our next special event coming up is our annual spaghetti dinner on October 15th from 5:00 to 7:00. Our seniors work really hard to cook up a delicious spaghetti dinner for everybody, so I encourage everyone to come out to that as well. And then, on behalf of the Ferndale Youth Assistance, Sunday, October 18th, is their annual Bowl-a-thon from 1:00 to 4:00 at Luxury Lanes. They've reduced the price this year, it is $25 a bowler, and you have to register by October 14th. For any information, you can contact Melinda Hicks at the Youth Assistance Office. Her email is melinda.hicks@ferndalschools.org. Um, and if you don't wanna bowl, um, they're gonna have raffle, raffle prizes and fifty-fifty drawing that you can come out and participate in as well. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could add on that, for your event, um, we could use volunteers. Uh, Councilman Lennon, perhaps you could, uh, come help the kids paint pumpkins for a couple of hours?
At the bowl-a-thon?
No, at the, uh, fall fest.
Oh, at the fall fest.
I, I usually stop out, stop up, and I show I can help, I can do some henna's under the kids, lead me.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
You're gonna-
I always stop up there. It's sponsored by-
It's sponsored by Garden Fresh, or May, once again, our presenting sponsor. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Derek?
Trying to shame me, aren't you?
Derek, anything from economic development this evening? Fire Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening?
Mr. Mayor, as you already heard, DIY and the art fair were very successful, but I do gotta give a shout out to Krista Johnston, as she did an incredibly great job and did her homework, uh, this year in setting it up, and even gave us an idea. We had a little bit of problem on the west side with the art fair, people coming in whenever they wanted. Krista put them in time slots and made them come in at certain times and set their stuff up, lock it, and then get out. And that really keeps the flow going, 'cause a lot of people don't realize and a lot of vendors get upset, but we still have to protect the buildings along Nine Mile Road, Troy, and they block the traffic. I could not get a truck down there if we actually have a fire in one of the existing, uh, businesses. So, um, keeping that flow going, she came up with some creative stuff, so she knows what she's doing, and excellent job on her part.
Excellent, thank you. Kara, anything from the community engagement area this evening?
Hello, I have one thing to announce. I'm very happy to say that after, um, a rather extensive survey of our residents and multiple internal conversations, we have a new newsletter, a new and improved, um, printing and launching this week. Yay, and, um, so I have just a few things to mention about it. First of all, we worked with a really talented local designer to come up with, um, a new kind of look and feel format that incorporates our branding, um, has a, has a design that will carry forward every quarter so that we have some consistency, and also makes, um, it easy for readers to find what they're looking for. Um, we listened to people who said that they don't want long articles and a lot of profiles and information like that, as much as, um, it pains me because I would love to write lots of words, um, people don't wanna read them, and that's okay. So, uh, the goal going forward is that we will have one kind of feature that will be the thing that people really are gonna wanna know about based on the calls we get and the events going on. In this case, it's going to be curbside leaf pickup, and that will be a little bit lengthier. And then, in addition to that, we're gonna really focus on events, um, tips, news you can use. Um, we have a feature in here, a short, um, thing with tips about recycling and what can be recycled, and how easy it is, and how beneficial it is, and things like that. Um, the one other thing we would like to, uh, point out is, everybody loved the calendar, um, that predates me, and, um, I've heard, you know, so many people say that it was helpful. Not in the fall edition, but starting in the winter edition, our designer, um, has come up with a way that there will be a tear-off calendar feature. So, for the upcoming three months, we'll have events, we'll have information about, you know, garbage delays and things that everybody wants to know. They can tear it off, hang it on their refrigerator, and then, um, it will be a more cost-effective way for us to deliver that information, as well as easier for us to keep it current. It's so hard to do a calendar, a print calendar, that spans the length of a year. So, residents can look for this in their mailboxes, probably within the next seven to ten days, and, um, I think that's it.
Excellent, thank you. Look forward to that. All right. Uh, DPW, anything this evening?
Nothing to report, uh, tonight.
All right, very good. Joe, anything else from the, from your neck of the woods?
Yeah, I'd like to just provide an update on probably a couple technical difficulty issues that people have noticed and experienced, one including tonight. Um, first off, I do apologize about some of the issues, some of you out there who might not be hearing what I'm saying, but can read my lips. Um, we have reason to believe we've identified the problem, and it is Comcast. Some of their equipment that they house here is failing, uh, it just needs to be replaced. We will work with Comcast to resolve that. Um, AT&amp;T and Wow users should be hearing me right now. Um, but we'll, we'll be doing an investigatory process, and, and certainly, the audio will be restored by October twelfth for the next council meeting. Secondly, you might have noticed another announcement, uh, today about, uh, some phone issues, uh, with the city. Uh, this has reoccurred often enough over the past three months that I thought I could just provide an update for the public and council, um, with just a brief explanation. This is, uh, the city's phone system is, is aged, and it was also impacted by the flood last year in August two thousand and eleven. We were able to, um, restore it to operate, uh, on a shoestring over the year, but as part of the insurance claim also, um, uh, we have, we were able to get the phone system replaced. Now, over, uh, it's a very long and complex process, um, uh, we had a lot of years of technology to update to get us to a modern phone system, but we are very close to successfully transitioning over. Um, I would use this opportunity to, uh, warn council and the public, the transitions with technology are never seamless, nor are they easy. Um, we are trying to troubleshoot any delays from crossing over phone numbers from one old system to a modern system, uh, and troubleshoot and plan for it as best as we can. Um, we are shooting for a transition on, on the day of October sixteenth, which is a Friday, so the Monday business week of October nineteenth, uh, we hope to have the new phone system in place. But I do wanna use this opportunity to warn the public, um, that there could be some issues during the transition, uh, some temporary lapses, uh, where they might not be able to reach who they'd like to reach. But in the long run, I guarantee you, you'll be able to reach whoever you wanted to reach much quicker than you could before.
Real good.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Barbara, anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Elections.
Elections.
Yeah, October fifth is the last day to register to vote, if you haven't done that. Um, AV ballots or absentee ballots were all mailed on the twenty-first, and we still do need some precinct workers, so call or stop by City Hall. You changed your email.
Oh, very good, excellent. All right, April, anything from the city manager's office?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
All right, Dan, anything else from the legal perspective? All right, Councilman Martin?
I have two things. Once, uh, when you're done bowling for Ferndale Youth Assistance on the eighteenth, right? Yeah, um, head over to Twisted Tavern. Rotary is having an annual, well, hopefully will be an annual chili cook-off where I will proceed to, uh, kick the mayor's ass in my chili.
Woo!
And, uh-
Oh, pretty bold statement.
Yes, it is, yes, it is. And all the funds go to scholarships, uh, for, for students that Rotary gives out. It's a great organization, it's a great cause, and candidly, I make an awesome chili, so it's gonna be great.
Look what the Dan is cooking.
That's right, so come on out to the, to the chili cook-off, and it's, it's gonna be a good time. On a more serious note, um, I wanna thank the Johnstons publicly because I think they've really reinvigorated the art fair that, that has gone on for years. DIY is a fantastic event. It brings so many people into the city, and this year especially, I think it was more successful, and this is no offense, than I ever thought it would be. It was incredible, it was great. With that comes problems. If you were living beside, you could not leave your house this weekend because of the parking situation, and that's on us, not on the Johnstons. So I would encourage and request from the Special Events Committee, who I know is very aware of this and, uh, proactively working on this, uh, to come back with a report to us about how, as these festivals grow in popularity, and as Ferndale grows in popularity, we better handle parking for special events. There are things I witnessed this weekend, spending time on the east side of Ferndale, that I've never seen before, and candidly, was quite appalling, uh, independent observations. Um, I, I compliment our police officers, who did a fantastic job as much as they could managing that, but it is just beyond what we ever thought or what we have capacity to handle from a parking perspective, especially when you look at streets like East Breckenridge, where there's parking on both sides of the street. You couldn't get an ambulance down to East Breckenridge this weekend, there's no way. So, we've gotta find more creative and better solutions that complement these events, um, and then continue to encourage them to grow, and be a more supportive partner of these events, uh, and still maintain the integrity of the residents and the emergency, uh, opportunities with the city and, and other things. So I'm gonna be, I'm gonna harp on this as we move forward, and I know, again, the Special Events Committee is aware of it. Michael Larry's been a huge advocate for this. We, we've got to take this more seriously than I believe we have in the past because it's, it's just become really critical, and I wouldn't trade the fairs, the, the art fair and the DIY for the world. I think I had a great time, they're fantastic. We just need to catch up with the infrastructure, so, that's it, that's my podium.
All right. Councilman Lennon?
Well, Dan stole a little of my thunder, but I, I know Krista's gotten all the props here, but Chris, I know you had a hand in it, and, you know, just a big thank you to the Johnstons and your staff and every, all the volunteers, and everybody, and to the DDA for the other side, and it was fantastic, we got a chance to get down there, and it was great. But yes, uh, I know my mom lives in Leroy Farmville, she couldn't even get out of her driveway, or barely get out of her driveway. Yeah, it's, so it's not only east side, it's west side too, but we'll deal with that as it goes. Um, welcome, Mr. Hicks, I wanna say that. Barb, is this your first meeting?
No.
Second. Second?
I missed you last time.
Thanks for coming.
You might have.
Welcome aboard and congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, through the chair to Matt. Street sweepers, where they been? What's going on? I know they got rebuilt.
Yeah, uh, we've had issues with them, uh-
Man, I know the public wants to know this too.
Yeah, step to the mic, thanks, man.
'Cause I've got a lot of calls.
Yes, we have had issues with them breaking down. I know, uh, one of them, we had about, I think there were six or seven ho, hydraulic hoses that we had to order and get fed back in. Um, that was a big job. We're, we're continuing to try and keep them up and running.
Are they running now?
Yes.
Oh, can we see them out in the near future?
Yes.
I mean, that saves our infrastructure.
Definitely.
Okay, 'cause I haven't seen, I saw them once, early spring, and that, man, that-
Okay, I will make note of that. Uh, they have been out, though.
Okay, I, I might have missed them, I'm not sure, but, but I've had some inquiries from the public, though.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, man.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Uh, Councilman Polica?
I have nothing this evening.
All right.
Oh, my God.
Councilwoman Piana?
Dan's choking down here.
Yeah, um, you know, I just wanna DIY love all around. That's all I'm gonna say about it. Um, it's one of our favorite festivals here. Um, I just wanted to say, um, thanks to Joe and Ashley and Greg for going up to, um, Trevor City for the MML conference or convention. Um, we had a great time and learned a lot about what, uh, policy changes MML is, uh, trying to advocate for on behalf of our cities, villages, and townships. Unfortunately, um, the cities from Ferndale to Birmingham, uh, did not win the Community Excellent Award, uh, Westland did, for a big box conversion, but I, but I wanted to say thanks to Kara for really helping, um, us pull together our presentation, um, uh, at the event. Um, but I really wanted to say thanks for Ashley Labs from the Ferndale Area Chamber. Um, MML, for the first time, extended, um, a free registration to a community member, and, um, we chose on city council to extend this invitation to Ashley, um, since she's new to the Ferndale Area Chamber, and she came up with us and spent, um, three days getting to know us and understanding some of the critical issues facing cities, and, um, hopefully, we'll have a stronger partner, um, working, uh, with the chamber on some of these issues going forward. Um, and, uh, I just wanted to say, um, following up with, um, our Commissioner, Helene Zach, is that, um, the Regional Transit Authority really is pushing forward, um, on transit planning, um, all in, in due preparation for a regional ballot initiative, um, to support regional transit, transit in November two thousand and sixteen. And the, um, next, um, event is coming up in October, um, at the zoo, and of course, I've moved away from that page. Um, and people can come out and let, uh, everybody know, uh, their thoughts on, on the regional plan. And the one that's closest to us here in Ferndale on the regional plan is Thursday, October twenty-second, at the Detroit Zoo from four to eight o'clock PM. Um, and then, on another note, apparently, the RTA is supposed to reconvene the cities for the Woodward Avenue to take us on the next stage of the environmental assessment for, on the Woodward Corridor on Bus Rapid Transit, and that should be initiated, um, next month, which is three or four days away. So more on that front of moving forward on the, on the transit plan. In addition, SEMCOG got two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant award to represent the cities on the Woodward Corridor to come up with some TOD planning around transit stops. So this is gonna be a big deal for Ferndale and, and the downtown over the next twelve to fifteen months, um, of, of planning for, for transit. Big stuff, big changes for our major corridor, so.
Did you say you had one more?
I just did, and through the chair, um, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, that CN's gonna be on the next-
It, it, it's not for sure gonna be on the next agenda.
Okay, it's, when it does come on the agenda, um, April, can we get, if it still exists, Eight Mile Boulevard Association in here? I have a lot of questions.
For?
The Eight Mile Boulevard Association.
Just as an update on their-
What they done, 'cause they haven't done anything, as far as I can see.
So, not related to the CN?
No, but it's a good opportunity for them to come in because it is affecting them somewhat.
Okay, um, okay.
We just haven't seen them in a year, and we're paying dues to them.
Okay.
You know?
Actually, there, I think they're coming on the next one for their dues, so that will work out, right?
Perfect, yeah.
Excellent, all right.
That's it, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
And then I just had one suggestion on a follow-up comment, um, regarding parking for the DIY. Since I bike, um, the back way here, which is for me, Marshall to, um-
Hex.
Hexton, thank you. Um, is that the University High School has a huge empty parking lot, and there's only a spattering of cars that park there, and it really is a very short walk to the event. So somehow, if we could utilize a free public parking lot that's available, that would be helpful, I think, for the east side.
Very good. Uh, speaking of the MML conference, I just wanna congratulate our very own Councilwoman Piana, who was elected to the board of MML, which is not only prestigious for her, but helpful for Ferndale to be represented in a very, uh, influential statewide organization. So, uh, congratulations on your election. Uh, uh, I will once again say, Barry, we look forward to working with you. You have lots to do, uh, you have big shoes to fill, both from a fifteen-year, uh, longtime, uh, executive director, and also the, the shoes of Cindy Wilcox. So, uh, uh, you, the bar is high, but we have, uh, great hopes for you and look forward to working with you and the board. Uh, and at that, meeting is adjourned.